Good evening, welcome to the Town of Auburn Planning Board Meeting of Tuesday, June 8th, 2021, now called over at 7:00 P.M. This meeting is being recorded and broadcasted live by local access program. Is there anyone here in the audience tonight that is recording tonight's meeting? There being none, please rise and join us in the sleeping flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands on the nation of God, in his hope, liberty, and justice for all. At this time, I would like to remind the audience, applicants, town administration, each of the planning members, to please refrain from asking questions regards to all matters discussed this evening with offers being granted by consent. First item on our agenda this evening is applicant Eastland Partners Incorporated at definitive subdivision plan, three building lots and construction of a roadway and related infrastructure improvements are properly located at 50 and 190 Washington Street, map 34, lot four, and map 27, parcel 14. See we have guys.
Hi, good to be here. For the record, Steve O'Connell from Turning Point Engineering, Clay Williams from Eastland Partners. So, just a quick update where things stand from our perspective. This issued a second revised plan for everyone's review. Adam has circulated two departments. I hand delivered, set to the fire, Captain Warren. There's a follow-up from our meeting initially with him to design the second means of egress of fire road. DPW has comments and, I'm sorry, has revisions and Graves Engineering has revisions. We were hopeful that we'd have some feedback before this meeting because those revisions were provided to those folks prior to the last meeting, but everyone's busy. My general feeling is that everything that's on those plans are based on their requests. So DPW with sewer, DPW with second means of egress, fire with second means of egress. I met with fire to have their input on the design, so I'm confident that they're satisfied after I brought the plans to Captain Warren. We laid them out for a minute, he says, "That looks like we talked about, take a look." So engraved engineering's review, up until this most recent set of plans was fairly clean, deferring some things to the board themselves. So what they're looking at, I believe on this latest review would be the second means of egress access road. So I'm an optimist, it gets me in trouble sometimes, but you know, my general instinct is that we're in pretty good shape. Might be a couple of i's, a dot, and t's to cross. I have comments from you, Mr. Regan, at the last meeting regarding some of the details. Those are done in office. Was hoping I would just present those on a final, what I would consider a final set of plans, which would incorporate any outstanding items from Graves or DPW or fire. So again, I feel as though that we've been responsive to all comments and input, and unless there's some new information from the board tonight, you know, I think we're waiting for any department comments they may come in and certainly Graves Engineering. We also received a copy of the letter from BHB, which was performing the traffic review. You know, as far as I'm concerned, it's a relatively clean letter. They acknowledged that it would be potentially some long delays for vehicles turning left out of subdivision road consistent with existing site driveways onto Washington Street turning left, but standard traffic engineering opinions are those are delays that don't affect the traveled roadway, those are delays that dealt with off the roadway onsite. And a lot of our estimations for trip generation, we're generally conservative because we rarely only have one known user for one of the subdivision lots, lot three, which maybe we can get into before we're done here this evening, just in general. But, so I pose these statements the way that I pose them because what I'd like the board to consider, because it'll take a little bit of time to get through that process, would be to maybe start to, maybe to authorize Adam to start to prepare what would be a decision, but it'd be something that we'd be working on. It's conditions that are always contemplated, but because time is of the essence for construction season, et cetera, we'd like to see if we could introduce some efficiencies while we clean up some of the minor outstanding issues. So I'll leave it there and entertain some discussion points or comments if you like, or aspects of the plan that we need to revisit, but this is the same set of plans that we had at the last meeting because we don't have comments.
Is there anyone in the public that may have a comment or question? None? Do you have any questions?
No, not at this time.
Have you heard back from Mass DOT?
Yeah, so everything is submitted to DOT and they're performing their, what they call a 25% review. Unofficially, they're okay with subdivision road and future site driveway alignment, but you know, it's a review process that they do. You know, I view permitting situations like this as, you know, chicken or the egg. DOT kind of wants to know the planning board is okay, planning board kind of wants to know DOT is okay, DPW wants to know everyone's okay. You know, if, if something had to be tweaked, you know, we'd be back. But I think a lot of effort went in with professionals, you know, reputable traffic engineering firm that does a lot of work with DOT on these types of situations, site distances, turning lanes, there's a pretty significant amount of work that's going to have to happen on Route 20 with turning lanes and widening and shoulders. It's going to be, it's going to be a pretty robust, you know, DOT process, but it is formally submitted to DOT and they are doing their review that will lead up to their 25% kind of review comment status.
And the sidewalks will show up to the easement?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, exactly. Thank you. I have no questions at this time.
The big thing we're waiting for now is DOT, really.
Yeah.
For us to give the total blessing of this, we've got to get the approval from DOT. A lot of the stuff that BHB wrote in here, we'd already granted the waivers.
Right, exactly.
Sidewalks on both sides.
Yep.
Not a 28 foot, it's going to be 24.
Yeah, that was the first time I had seen any sort of comment about this being a major road. I don't interpret it by definition as a major road.
No, neither does I.
Okay, so.
24.
I think we're on the same page with 24, but we're actually providing 26, just because we know there's going to be trucks. So, yeah, I agree. I think, I think we'll have DOT's preliminary comments that's, that virtually say that they have no issue with alignments and locations, but then there's design aspects of Route 20 itself that'll, that'll continue to be reviewed, but I think that's the key for the planning board, is that this is the subdivision road and they're okay with its location intersecting Route 20, or they're not.
Well, naturally, you'd want to push it down or across from Mazda Place, but you can't because of the easement.
Exactly, yeah.
That would have been ideal.
It would have been, absolutely.
I don't think the delayed times would have been any less coming out of your development, saying the queue's going to be two or three.
Yeah.
More than that going out of McDonald's.
I totally agree. Yep, I live in a 26 lot, two cul-de-sac subdivision, and there are some days, you know, I pull out and I see nobody, and some days I pull out, you know, and I'm the third person in line, it just depends on timing and.
So I'm not sure where we can go from here, Adam.
Well, I don't know if you want to discuss, assuming everything lines up and we're good to go, we're raised, although DOT is kind of their own permanent process. Want to discuss possible conditions that would be included in the final approval. We do have, there is almost a standard conditions that are generally, generally subdivision approvals are not all going to apply in this case, it's a commercial development, but we don't want to discuss any waivers that have been discussed, the requirements. Got to talk about that now in preparation for when the decision will be ready.
I remember right, the major waivers were one sidewalk. Wheelchair ramp at the end toward Route 20. Trees planted every 60 feet staggered from one side of the road to the other.
Correct.
Sidewalk on one side, sidewalk up against the curb.
Correct.
And then it goes down to the cul-de-sac.
So technically, technically the dead end length waiver, but we're providing second means of egress, which hopefully, you know, gives you the comfort in granting that waiver.
So is the road still going to be 1,000 feet?
Yeah.
So with the fire access, it's no longer a dead end.
They're going to block it off.
True, but I mean, the whole point of the law, only going 800 feet is for emergency vehicles, so the emergency vehicle will have access on that special access road on the tank.
Yes.
That's what it's there for.
So then the waiver's no longer required.
I think we have to do that as a waiver, just to be, keep everything i's dotted, t's crossed.
Yeah, no confusion.
I think because of the access road, it kind of eliminates any, like Bill's concern.
Yeah, it was actually Bill's idea.
It always.
So I gave him all the credit for, you know, calling me and just saying, "Hey, this makes sense." I said, "Yes, it does."
Fire place along access to, okay.
Yeah, and I only see there, you know, and we're going to be back in front of you because one thing I'd like to do before we're done is just talk about next steps for different parts of the subdivision, but site plan for each of these lots, and you'll see how the components we've designed to date will dovetail with these future design elements. Because Eastland is the owner of each of these lots, as they develop them and sell them, we're, will be involved as the engineer, so no other engineering firm's going to come in, and you're going to have to try to educate them on what you, you know, what you discuss with me. So this is going to be a team effort from start to finish, so I think that's going to be beneficial too.
I don't think we ever actually wait, clarify any waivers.
What, we didn't, we just headed in that direction, right? We didn't vote, right?
So I don't even know if we can do that tonight. We're still waiting for Graves review, final review?
Yeah, you can, you can vote on some of the waivers if you want to do that tonight. It may be cleaner to wait until he calls from the hearing to go on waivers.
Yeah.
That's fine, we can do that.
I think we're on the same page, you know, like I don't think you're going to, you know, pull the fast one.
Everything, oh no.
Yeah.
Everything we pretty much asked for, you've be done on the plans. I know it's not on the final plan after the last meeting because, like you said, everybody's busy, you know, get everybody's answers back, so.
Yeah. Yeah, or part of the, if they're in the decision, as part of the decision, as part of voting on ultimate decision, you'd be voting on waivers, however you'd like to do, you know, procedurally, but.
I'll leave it clear if we wait until we got all the answers back, and then maybe we can just wrap it up in two weeks and be done.
Yeah, yeah, that sounds, that sounds great.
If you say we're good, conditioned on Mass DOT's decision, we can do that.
As far as hours of construction, where are you guys hoping to work weekends?
Well, I know the board has some hours of construction that they usually put as condition, and I think we've just come to accept those. You know, we're, we'd always request that you consider longer hours, maybe this site location helps, helps that request. If it doesn't, I'm not going to fight with you because I don't think it's a fight we'll win.
Yeah.
It's not a residential area, the Tuck Farm is the closest residences.
Can't even see.
I was there today with conservation.
Exactly. This is before the leaves came out, I can see, you guys had already cleared and everything?
Yeah, exactly.
I didn't see anything.
And I was there again today with conservation and I was like, right.
What was the elevation difference?
It's like 30, yeah, 30 feet, 30 to 40 feet.
So I mean, I know you guys are probably going to start at lot three, which is the closest to it.
Yeah.
So I think any issues we would have would, we're, it's head there, so.
Most, most contractors start at seven, try to go to 3:30, but they ask to go to five. On Saturdays, it's always eight to 12.
For us, it's the morning, because you know, if you're going to get a load of material and, and if the, if everyone else in the construction industry starts at seven, but they can't deliver to your site until eight, they're going to go to another site first.
Not until 10.
You're not going to get to it until 10, so then you really don't start until those things show up, so it extends the whole construction period because of just one hour in the morning. Again, we're.
What are the standard hours?
Eight to four thirty.
Eight to four thirty.
They haven't done that since I started in the business back at 7:00 too. Got a seven to 3:30.
We're fine with the end time, just the 7:00 AM, it'd be really beneficial. That one hour could equal weeks and weeks of construction delays.
And we all know, if you plan a seven to 3:30, there's going to be days that you're out there at five, 5:30, because things didn't go right.
Yeah, tapping a water main and, right, you know, you're.
Could be anything.
Exactly, you know, I know you've been in the trenches. I mean, given the location here, you've got a constant hum with noise from Route 20 and the Mass Pike, so, you know, it's not a make where, right.
It's an industrial area anyway.
Right. It's a big site, you know, there's a good amount of distance between our, you know, budding residential properties.
There was 20 feet of existing growth remaining, is that correct? Between them, so there's that.
So what you'll see on a site plan for lot three, which is the big lot in the back, because we've advanced it pretty far and. We're meeting your landscape buffer requirements. The site plan that you haven't seen, that I, that we have substantially done at the office and will submit to the board. Sheet, the three series, yeah, there you go. So yeah, the top of that, well, here, it's part best here.
Awesome, you had to get one of those.
Yeah, it's right up in there. So we're, the site plan that we're doing for lot three, we're meeting your, your landscape buffer bylaw. That's a zone, that's a, that's a buffer zone A for your planting, so.
How wide is it, Steve?
That one shown there is probably 40 feet. The site plan.
Forty feet on your property.
Yeah.
Not Kyle and the rest of it calling up to 35.
Exactly, yeah, so plus we're going to have, the site plan that you'll see has some slight grading changes, because once you know what's going to go on the site, you can grade it accordingly. So we have a slope up, an eight-foot terrace, and then it slopes up, but then on top, we meet your 25-foot buffer with pretty robust, I think you know Alice Webb from Earth Design Landscape?
No.
She, she's like, "Oh, Auburn has got a pretty robust bylaw," so she knew it, which I assume maybe you've seen her work, but no, it's a nice landscape plan and should be, should be satisfied when I, I don't think we're seeking any waivers for.
And the one we've already talked about, the trees.
True.
The grass.
Yeah.
No other conditions need to be adjusted, standard conditions?
Well, VHB had mentioned in here about the grass strip and all that, but that was something we already decided against.
Yeah.
It's not going to become a town road anyway. You're going to maintain it privately owned, so. See the need for the fiber, grass strip in there anyway. Enough grass behind, behind the water. It's only just nothing but maintenance, like.
Yeah, grass never grows between roads, salt and intense sun and heat from, heat coming off pavement on both sides, so. Yeah, I mean, I, so I think there's nothing we haven't covered administratively, we have some things to do, but if we can work on those while we're waiting for final comments to come in, they'll meet at the finish line.
Are you looking just to continue for the next meeting then?
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted you, I wanted Adam to have some comfort from the board that if, you know, he puts something together for the next meeting, you know, for discussion and review, that that was okay with you, didn't want to.
Even after the last meeting, I knew you were well on your way.
Yeah.
See the total change and stuff.
Because one of the things that I think is right behind this process is submitting the site plan for lot three. I'd like the board's permission to submit that. Your seminal deadline, you have one coming up next week, and that would put us on a meeting in July, so you know, three-week. Adver, you know, advertising period, we wrap up the subdivision and we roll into a site plan for lot three. That's going to be for a company called Ross Express, they're a.
It's a truck company.
Yeah, freight, shipping, you know, LTL and Less Than Load and TTL freight shipping. They're in Sutton right now. I did their site plan in Sutton, they've just outgrown their facility and there's no room for expansion there, and they love the site.
You see their trucks a little?
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Site works great for them, based on, you know, where they, where they go currently, great highway access.
They go down the street from the Mass Pike, they go down the street from 290.
Yep. And their hours of operation, I think, are going to dovetail nicely with traffic. So we have a separate, not to, you know, I don't want to talk about things that aren't on the agenda, but separate traffic study for that, ready to go, landscape plan, site plan. We'll have conservation, just buffer zone, lighting, portometric plan, so we've got a pretty robust set of plans ready to submit. If you don't object to that, that'll just follow, follow right in line with this and.
I'll follow it and submit it next week, so we can get the ball.
Yeah, okay, super, awesome. That's all I had. Make a motion, make a motion to continue to next meeting on the 22nd.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Steve?
Aye.
Yourself? I don't have to tell my name anymore.
Wonderful.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, good to see you in person.
Yeah, see you in a few weeks.
Thanks, good night.
Other business, discussion of SWEB 430 Rochdale Street, request for extension of time. Is there anyone here problem?
Yes, my name is Joseph Mendelson, I'm representing SWEB, Earth Web.
So it looks like you're having problems with EverSource.
Yes, so National Grid, they put us into another group study, and that's going to take probably till, like the letter said, I don't know if you guys have read it, but we started the process with National Grid back in 2017, and then there has been a large bit of congestion with the Massachusetts goals to get to a certain amount of renewable energy by 2030, which then was a gold rush for DG projects to get into the grid. So National Grid, EverSource, as well as ISO New England, wanted to pump the brakes slightly, slow everything down, and then do a group of affected system operator studies, and then subsequently group studies. So we started our group study on April 5th, roughly takes about 160 business days according to the tariff, sometimes it runs a little bit further along than that. So we're expecting to get our group study results back from, from National Grid in November, and then, you know, potential for another study from, from National Grid as well. So we're respectfully requesting another two years from, from the board here to help with our, our process with National Grid. Nothing in terms of the project itself has changed, just unfortunately, we're getting held up by, by the grid.
Anybody have any questions? Steve?
No.
So you've done nothing out there yet? I haven't been out to the site, so.
No, we have not.
Clear, haven't done any of that?
Not, not to my knowledge.
So from the time you get your final, final, final approval, how long is, is the projected time of construction?
So we would still, once we get the final approval, we would still need to order our parts, because upon final approval, they give us the, the final system capacity, as well as the, the cost for interconnection. So from there, we would then need to work with our, our EPC to get everything ordered and get it shipped out there. But in, in terms of construction timeline, it shouldn't take too long, a few months.
So you got to order your stuff, so you're going to get that, where things are going right now?
That is correct. We don't want to preorder anything because we.
Yeah, they pull a plug on you, then you're stuck with all that.
Exactly, and you know, especially with the racking system itself, it's fabricated to the specific site, so we wouldn't necessarily be able to easily recycle it to another site, so. We, we like to wait until we get the final study review back, so then we can order the parts, get it fabricated, and then ship to the site.
What are they studying here, you know, what kind of output you're going to have back into the system?
Yeah, and this is something that we're, not only our company, but other companies within Massachusetts, they're starting to study areas that are not necessarily affected by distributed generation, but they're studying transmission lines as well, all throughout ISO New England. So this is parts in Maine, New Hampshire, Vermont, Mass, all throughout, and it's less about our specific project, more about the system as a whole, and they're trying to push and, and overbuild to help get Massachusetts to its goals, but unfortunately, it's affecting the projects that have come in prior to them wanting to do this study and made this exorbitant timeframe, which is detrimental to a lot of things.
Yeah, because everything's escalating in cost.
Exactly.
But by waiting, it costs you money.
I mean, there, there's that, and then there's the repercussions for ITC as well, and it's affecting our, our ability to, you know, get into the SMART program as a whole, so it's, we're, we're still, we want to, to do this project, we just need a little bit more time to get these, these back from national.
Any objections to their question? Can I have a motion to approve the two-year extension?
I'll make the motion to approve the two-year extension. That would take us to June 2023.
Second?
All those in favor, Tom?
Aye.
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 And I do have to say, we're hoping that'll come back quicker, so we can come to you sooner with some finalized designs and start pulling permits to, to get this constructed, but thank you very much for your time, I do appreciate it.
What is your alternative response to, you've already bought the land, are you renting it?
We, we're hoping maybe some, some form of conservation. I do know there are some, some butterfly grounds around the area. I mean, we were hoping to do that congruently regardless. But we'll, we'll find, we'll try to find something to, to do with the site, but this is definitely Plan A. One, one A, one.
One A, A, A.
One, one of one.
But thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Meeting minutes for 5:25, 2021? So that's off the table. Loan business not proceeding by me.
Sign, company already signed. That's the daycare. I do not have any updates from the first line file.
So, business development is working on with another company on that grant to assess the 20 and 12, 12th quarter, so they're working on potential uses of some of that land and some business feedback. I was on the call earlier. We'll have to see what comes, but it looks like maybe some potential for some zoning changes might come, or not zoning, but some of the overlay district, I'm sorry, what else?
Elements zoning changes.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
One of them is going to be, be discussed in, you're going to have to go table uses, descriptions, worked out very monotonous before the pandemic, but ground holes, so we're not sure if we'll hold that forward for October or for the spring, but that's going to be coming at some point. And on the call, we discussed possibly a mixed-use overlay district, there's already a district. There's already a district existing. It's not just on that one. Home Depot and VHB site is mixed-use district, but it's not really utilized that way because of the businesses. One thought was to have mixed use down by the Oxaline, um, between Oxaline and Albert Street on the north side of 20. So there's options for businesses and maybe increase in density or pair well with what it'd be, what it's going on. A very important coming out by the fall, that particular grant, after recovery grant.
Thought it was pretty interesting. Obviously, depending on what they say, we might need to redesign a few things. Thought it'd be good to bring up now.
Hi, this is me. That's the, from the open space forum, that was Monday night. Got my memory that we're looking at the subdivision regulations. There are some updated plant listings in those regulations. So the DOT has already looked at it. That will need a public hearing and a vote to get changing those trees for one or for any other changes to the subdivision regulations. Those regulations are now eight years old, maybe worth spending more time reviewing. Compared to other towns, they're still fairly up to date, but, you know, still rough up ahead of time.
Todd, you have more knowledge on that, correct?
Yeah.
So I know you brought that up, but maybe a review and your input would help as well.
You do free to task.
Anything else? I have a motion to adjourn meeting. Our next meeting will be 6:22, 2021.
Make that motion.
I have a second.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.